Okay.
Okay, this is a virtual meeting of the city of Kingston zoning board of appeals and it will now come to order. It is six oh two and my name is Brian Cafferty. I'll be chairing this proceeding. Let me take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members are, and Donna, you can introduce yourself.
Donna Martin.
Mary.
Mary Newbauer.
Anthony.
Anthony Capone.
Okay, and our new liaison from the common council is Carl Frankel. There will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everybody a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. A professional demeanor is expected. And with that, actually, I don't have the agenda in front of me. First item up is old business?
Approval of the minutes.
First item will be new business, Gage Street.
Gage Street, okay.
Dwight Trimble.
Right.
Who is?
Yeah.
He was here with us. I'm going to ask him to unmute, so.
Well, do we have to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I could find that agenda. Sorry about that, guys.
The agenda I got actually had different stuff on it, so.
So I won't, I won't bother.
It has like all the Blue Stone Court stuff on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, first order of business was the meeting minutes, approval of the minutes.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, please. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Minutes are approved. Okay, so let me just pull up the the application. So eighty-six Gage Street, um, this is a this is a Mr. Dwight Trimble is proposing to remove an existing building, single family home, I believe, and wants to replace it with two two-family residences after he subsidizes the property. But I will let him, Mr. Trimble, are you available there?
Dwight, you have to unmute yourself.
Dwight, you have to unmute yourself. Do you see that red microphone? It's got a slash through it. You gotta unmute it. Just click on it.
We see you, but we can't hear you.
Dwight, can you, can you hear us? Hello?
Dwight, you have to unmute yourself, Dwight.
You have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear you?
Can you unmute him? Eric, I think you might be able to.
All I could do is ask him to unmute and that's about all I can do. It's on his end.
Dwight, I think, actually, I think as the meeting, I think you can unmute people.
No. I can mute them. I could turn them off. I can't turn them on.
Flash through it.
On your computer, you need to join with audio. You have to unmute yourself.
Okay. Why don't we circle back to Dwight? Dwight, you need to figure out how to unmute yourself. We're going to go on to Daniel Ventura. Is Daniel on?
Hold on. One second.
Was, was Dwight invited as a panelist?
I promoted.
You promoted him? Okay, because I know that was an issue when one of the other meetings I was in.
I was wondering, is, is it, isn't there a way to instant message people so that we can just?
That's what I tried doing. I, it went out to under chat. There's a chat there. On the chat, Dwight. I love it.
Uh, Daniel, unmute yourself, please.
I am unmuting and how come I cannot see myself?
Uh, you gotta join with audio, Daniel, if you want to be seen. But it's okay, as long as we can talk to you, that's, that's.
I can listen to you. Can you listen to me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hear you.
Okay, you cannot see me though. Oh, terrible that is.
Wow, we're having, uh, Carl, um, just so you know, we don't usually have these technical difficulties, so don't blame me.
So you've got. It is fault.
Yeah, I don't know. It's nobody's fault. It's just is what it is. So, so, so Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, um, so members of the board, you're familiar with Daniel's application. We, at the last meeting, asked him to submit more detailed information regarding. There we are, regarding, um, the costs associated with the work that he performed on his building. And we wanted a budget for what the new improvements are. Did everybody have a chance to look at that?
Yes, I did.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board for comment and then after everybody spoke and I'm gonna share my thoughts about what we, what we received. So, um, who would like to start first? Anthony, how about you?
Well, my, uh, my concern is if the question that we are trying to answer is whether or not the hardship that allows this, um, use or, you know, expansion of use, uh, is created by, is not self-created, then we, I still don't see the information that shows that. Because we, we know a very expensive renovation happened, but we don't know, um, that it wasn't already planned that way.
Yeah, I, I think it's safe to assume from what everything that I've seen, that this is indeed a self-created problem on the part of the applicant. Which, because we're talking about a use variance with, which is a really high bar. This is, um, you know, you know, potentially a fatal flaw in the application. It's, it's, we, we can't get into the, potentially get into the precedent of approving use variances in particular for applicants who create their own hardship. So, um, that's, I, I understand where you're coming from there, Anthony. Anybody else? Mary, how about you? Do you have a?
I agree, you know, after looking everything over, um, basically Anthony was right. Renovations are extremely expensive, especially now through COVID with the rise in all of the materials and costs for the labor and everything. So if you're going on into renovation during that timeframe, the cost is going to be there, the elevated cost. It doesn't again show why it's a hardship at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can see the hardship, but I also know that the hardship was actually self-created by
That's what I meant.
Over improvement of the, the over improvement of the building and spending too much money to create a situation where there's no profitability and and now the applicant is proposing to spend another seventy thousand dollars to create another apartment and, um, you know, that's what he's looking for in order to, in order to create, um, you know, you know, in order to create more profitability. So that's that. Donna, Donna, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I actually agree with everyone because, as you said, it is self-created and, um, you know, it, it coming to the board to ask for another, uh, use, you know, to, to say it's a hardship. I don't think so. I really, I really don't.
Okay, so that's. May I, just one second, Daniel, just give me, just give me a second. So there is nobody else that, all right, so, um, well, I think, I think given the, in this give and take, I think people understand that I feel pretty much similarly to everybody else. So Daniel, um, you know, I, I imagine you have, um, you have something that you want to say regarding this, so feel free, go ahead.
Basically, I don't disagree with you, which is terribly because it goes totally against me. You know, basically, I tell you, and I thought a lot myself about why did I arrive at this situation? Number one, I'm a newcomer to Kingston. I moved into Kingston and I have done construction and renovations in Manhattan, which it cost a fortune, as you probably all know. You know, so when I came here and I got this property and I started renovating, right? I started this in February of twenty twenty when the COVID started, you know, and so I started working on it and I liked to renovate rather well. I renovate to keep the property, not really just to patch it up. You know, that's why when I put steel rock everywhere, ceilings, walls, everywhere, removes the mold, just pull them back. Try to, try to create something that will be really lasting, you know? And at the time, I was not quite thinking, basically, oh, I'm spending too much money. I suddenly start working on it and then the COVID hit me. And with the COVID, all of the prices start hitting. So I did make a decision, should I totally stop? Or I continue? And I was not aware that this price increase will continue and I finished the thing and I rented and I am happy with the property. And sometimes I will make money. So it's not a question that, you know, that is terribly, you know?
Well, I realize, I realize there's a couple of things that will improve your situation. Obviously, at some point, you won't have the debt service anymore on the property. Um, that's, that'll be resolved. I mean, you're currently right now getting, you know, pretty substantial rents, uh, for the property. So I don't know whether you.
I, I, I agree with you as well. And basically, I, I did this request for three reasons. One of them is because I really have a gigantic and beautiful and wonderful space on a very, very high ceilings on the attic. And as an artist, I love to renovate properties. I really love to do that. So this is very challenging. I wanted to do. That's nothing to do with you because you have to follow your rules and your regulations, you know? So I request that for, for that particular reason. I was really, you know, happy with the space that I have and sometime if this is not approved, I hope to be able to do it in the future. I cannot deny what you say that is self-regulated because I couldn't have stopped and waited and do it, you know, in twenty twenty-one when prices are better or in the winter, which is right now, prices are low because the people are not working, you know?
Right, so, so as, as much as the board is certainly keenly aware of the housing shortage and everything, it's, the, the problem that we have is, is that when, when somebody comes before the board and looks for a use change, they really have to reach, they really have to get over a high bar to establish a real, a real hardship and reason for, for changing the actual zoning, the use of a property. And in this particular case, the fact that it was self-created is somewhat, somewhat fatal. So, um, I'm gonna, um, you know, you're, you're a lovely person and I, and I really wish that there was another, another option. I just want to make sure that everybody, is there anybody, is there anybody else that member of the public that's here that wants to speak on this application before we render a decision?
Just unmute yourself if you want to speak on this issue. This is three oh one, three oh three Hasbrook Avenue.
Okay, if there's nobody else that wants to speak.
So, so basically what I'm trying to say, we agree, everybody agrees that the community needs more units. I do have the parking space. I do have the property and there is no neighbors because I'm a very good neighbor as well. You know, I can help anybody on the community that is complaining about it. In other words, I'm not asking you quote unquote to bend your rules, but this is a decision that, okay, I spent a lot of money. In any event, the thing is already done. I done it. I done it in a moment that it was really, really, really bad. And I continue to give word to people that really need it as well. So I so wish for you all to consider that and see perhaps you can say, okay, we, you know, it is not totally self-created because this is like a natural disaster, this pandemic. Let's face it, in other words, in another circumstance, I probably would have spent fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars less. And that.
That is, that is true. However, however, the, you know, I can't, I can't, I can't honestly say that the, uh, that the problem with the amount of money that you spent was, uh, was, was totally contributed to the impact of the COVID and on the supply chain issues. Obviously, you made decisions throughout this process and, um, and it's a, a, a large amount of money was spent there. I'm clear, I, it's clear to me because I do this for a living and have done it for a living. I'm currently doing it right now. And I know that, you know, you can choose, you know, you can choose to spend, um, you know, money in variety of different ways and it just, it seems like unrelated to the pandemic and the cost of things. You know, I just think that you made over improvements to the building and that's a self-created situation. So I'm going to ask at this juncture, if, if you're, uh, you know, if you would be so kind to just let us go ahead and render our decision. Is there a member of the board that would like to make a motion on this issue to either approve or deny?
A motion to deny it.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I, I wish to tell you that I thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity of being here more than once. I understand that you do have rules and regulations to follow regardless. I don't quite agree with it, but my feelings toward you all are really good. And I thank you so very much for allowing me to present this more than once.
Well, you're most welcome and you've been quite, um, uh, you know, quite accommodating through this whole process. And I'm really sorry that, um, you know, Donna, did you have a?
Excuse me, who, who'd second that motion?
My dude.
Mary.
Mary, okay, you just have to all vote now.
Yeah. So I'm, I already, Anthony, Anthony made the motion. And, um, Mary seconded it and so we just have Donna.
Yes, in favor.
Yeah, in favor of denying.
Yes.
And I am also in favor of denying, uh, regretfully so, Daniel. Sorry about that.
Brian, if I may, I just want to, Daniel, um, we, right now, the city of Kingston is going through a project called Kingston Forward, uh, citywide rezoning. And there's been a lot of discussion about expanding, uh, uses of, um, to like expand possibilities of having more units on properties. So you might want to get involved in that. I talked to Carl Frankel and, and the other common council members about it. You can find information on the Engage Kingston website. Uh, and you know, it's possible if new zoning is adopted in the city of Kingston, which will be looked at next, maybe the end of this year, that you might be in a different situation. But, uh, so you might want to get involved with that and, uh, and, and see where you can go.
All right, Daniel, thank you.
Can I just add one thing really quickly, Brian?
Sure.
Which is that I think there's a consensus on the common council that, or I, a building consensus, the density, we really need more density to make this work in terms of our housing situation. So that is in your favor and, um, I would encourage you, as was suggested, to stay tuned because your current situation could change. I hope it will.
Yeah, there, there's hope for the future, Daniel, but right now we have to abide by the guidelines under which we are bound, which is the current zoning scheme.
Totally understanding that. Thank you so much, Anthony, for the information. I'm aware that the city is having a new zoning evaluation, which is absolutely needed. And I will be looking forward to perhaps, uh, you know, chat or converse with Mr. Frankilla sometime. It's anything that I can do to help this out. I love this community. I'm super happy. I thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity of presenting this three times, basically. So, and I apologize for taking so much time from you all. I wish you a beautiful year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did, did, um, did Mr., uh, did, uh?
Dwight Trimble, I think I got it.
You did.
Ah, we can hear you. But I've never done this before, so please forgive me.
That's okay. Don't worry about it. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. All right. So I, I started the intro, so why don't you just go ahead while, while we got you unmuted and just give us a, uh, basically overview of what you're asking for.
Okay, what we're asking for is basically, we, it's a double lot that this house currently resides. It's really in horrible shape. And what we'd like to do is, uh, rather than subdividing the property and make two houses, two, two units on each, which we can do now, we're asking to put one four building, four unit building up with a zero lot line. It would still be subdivided. And it would make for easier access to, uh, to driving in and out. It gives us a little bit more greenery. It just is going to help out the community in that, from that respect. And that's it really in a nutshell.
Let me just clarify though, because it's two lots and, and as I understand it, and obviously my board members will correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, I rely on them for that. Anyhow, um, you're not really building a four-unit building. You're building two, two-family units on two separate lots, but you're not putting any space between the two buildings. They will have a common wall.
Correct.
Okay, great, that's.
Basically, a really small townhouse.
Yeah, yes, sort of.
Okay.
I, I think it's important because it, it's, it's not a four-family, it's two, two-family.
Two, two-family, correct.
With no, with, with no, um, with no yard, you know, space.
In between, the space in between, correct.
That's, that's the area variance you're looking for. You're looking for that to go to zero and.
I do have a question about that, um, which wasn't clear in the application, but, um, is it, are there actually, is it actually going to be two freestanding buildings or is it going to be like a townhouse where it's two buildings and they actually share that?
Roof.
Div- div- divided firewall.
Common wall, yeah.
I believe that's the way, uh, Mr. Jankovic, who is the architect, is going to design it. I believe so, yes. Because there was no actual blueprint plans for it. It was just a kind of a draft. I think, I thought, oh, okay, I thought everything was sent to you guys from Brenner.
We don't have blueprints of the building, but we do have a site plan.
We have a site plan.
With the building on it. But the, the question I have, the question I have, Dwight, is, um, the, what is, what is the reason for not having a alleyway between the properties where you can, um, where you can essentially, where you can essentially get at, um, each side of the building? Is it, is it because you don't believe there's enough space or is it a cost? I'm just trying to understand why you're going to zero and putting a common wall.
Well, I mean, obviously with the cost of, uh, supplies, it would save on some cost, but, um, mostly it's going to beneficial the property because the easier access in and around the, out the building to enter and exit would be better if we just kept the, the two buildings closer together.
Right, and I understand them being closer together. I'm just wondering, you know, you know, I, I mean, I can tell from the site plan that there's even with the, and I like the driveway, you know, one way in and
Right.
out and it loops around. It makes it very, um, you know, very easy for ingress and egress.
Egress, right.
Or parking spaces behind each building in the back, um, which is good. So you meet all the off-street requirements, but there's still a side, there's still a little bit of a side yard on each side. I mean, the only, the only criticism I think I would have of it is that there's literally no lawn whatsoever other than the green strip, other than the front and the green strips around the side and a little bit of, uh, little bit of backyard, not much, but, uh.
Well, I think with the one building, it allows us, uh, more greenery than if we were to put up two individual buildings.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
Question?
Yeah.
So this common wall that's going to be shared by the two units, is there going to be a firewall, soundproofing, sprinkler system?
Well, I believe the way, the building department, just so you know, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to be a fire-rated wall. And then the building, the, the building director will review everything and make his recommendations per code.
And it's also got to go before the planning board as well.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Mary?
That was Donna.
I'm sorry, Donna.
Yes, it does. That's okay.
I got Mary's nut name staring me in the.
Sorry, Brian.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Donna, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, and Mary, did you have a?
I'm good, I'm good, yes. It answered her question of mine, yes.
And Anthony, you're good?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, my, I mean, I guess this is, this is more of a planning board issue than it is for us, but, um, you know, I, I, in the design that's presented, I, I am concerned about the lack of green space and the amount of, um, if, the amount of like paved area that comes up in this, in this, in this plan, you know, so it's like if, uh, is allowing the lack of a side yard, uh, creating, uh, allowing the creation of more impermeable surface that we don't necessarily need or want. And also like, you know, that's not the design, you know, that what's laid out in our comprehensive plan is trying to like avoid those types of situations where needed, um.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's literally no, um, I mean, other than the, other than the grass strip, you know, between the building and the driveways, uh, and a little bit of grass stripper, there's a literally a grass band that goes around and.
It's all, all parking lot, basically.
And in the front yard. Well, it's all driveway and parking lot, yeah. However, um, it, uh, it, it takes a dilapidated old building and turns it from a single-family home into, you know, and with a net gain of three apartments, you know, uh, and it's zoned for it. It's just, um, it's just that it's not a gigantic lot. It's just big enough for it to actually be two legal lots, fifty by a hundred. It's not an ideal situation, I grant you, but, um, I don't know, I, I'm. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm inclined to, to, uh, think that. There is a, um, is a counterbalance here, um, in terms of. The, the real need for quality housing, and this would be, these would be nice apartments, I presume.
I, I agree. I mean, generally, I support the, the plan. It's my, this, you know, this is the driveway that's really the concern for me and whether or not we're. Oh, like allowing the situation to create more driveway than we need, than maybe needs to be. Um, otherwise, I totally support the idea, so.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
So, um, what is the need for subdividing the lot if you're gonna put these two units? Are you selling them separately?
We're not gonna sell.
They, they could be sold, they could be sold separately. Um, the point of putting the, of subdividing the lot is that the zoning. Doesn't, in my understanding of it, and I could be wrong about this. It doesn't allow for a four-unit building, and this is not a four-unit building. It's two, two-unit buildings. On separate lots with a common wall.
So the setback is an easier variance to get than the, than the use.
Though, so that's why it's being done this way. You know, I mean, Anthony, you have a point. I mean, you could create a side yard. By, um, by, uh, you know, creating a single. Two-lane ingress and egress driveway. Uh, it's not ideal, it's not ideal, but, um, but it. It makes it problematic from, from a subdivision standpoint, because you can't scoot the building over. Um, the, the building has to go, go, building has to go in the center of the property. Yeah. To, to accommodate this plan. Um, is, is, is everybody on the board made the, asked the questions they wanted to make or made the comments they wanted to make? Should I, I wanna open it to the public if there's anybody that wants to?
I'm good.
Everybody's good?
Right. So I wanna call on individuals, one by one, to make it less confusing.
Okay, well, I don't know i- if, who, who wants to speak.
Well, I, people have chatted, people have chatted to me.
Okay.
I have Mr. Tony Davis here. I have, uh.
Okay, so let's, let's.
John Blue, who's a neighbor on one side. I had the two neighbors on the other side. And appears to be some neighbors across the street and they all.
Okay, so let's get, let's get to the neighbors. Uh, let's just go ahead. Why don't you unmute them one at a time?
Yeah, so.
And before you do, before you do, Eric, I just want everybody to know that. When you're unmuted, you need to give us your name and address for the record. Thank you, go ahead.
So first, we're gonna go with Penny. Penny's a neighbor.
Okay.
Penny, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Penny Laurie and I live at ninety-six Gate Street, so I'm right next door.
Ninety-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, my first wor- worry was, um, how big the building was going to be. In adjacent to my property. That was my first concern. And then learning that it was, um, going to be. Two duplexes, which meant four families. That was my next concern. Um, we live on a mostly, we live on a residential street and it's mostly single-family houses. So bringing four families onto one property. Between single-family houses seems to be a lot. As far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I just wanna point out that you, it does, it does appear, um, it does appear to be one property, but it's not. It's actually being proposed to be subdivided into two single lots. Um, with the buildings, um, being, um, being. Uh, joined with a common wall. So it's, it's two, two-family homes on individual lots. Just clarifying that.
Okay, so the, the way that that sounded, though, when that came out, it just sounded like it's a workaround. To get around the variance to be able to do that, you know what I mean? But, okay, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I think it is a bit of a workaround, but.
Okay. Um, yeah, and having that many people, okay, 'cause usually, you know, a family has two, two cars, right? So now we're talking eight cars on their property. Coming out of a driveway onto Gate Street, which has traffic issues anyway. And I just think it's a lot much. Does that bring our property values down? It's adding more stress to our community. I had heard you say that it's gonna improve the community, but I don't see how. Putting multi-dwelling buildings in a. Uh, residential area that has single-family homes is improvement. And I also like to say that, um, I think the whole thing with this meeting. Um, was kinda done shady as well, because I, I. Our house here, and I know a couple of others, we didn't receive our letters until Saturday. So, you wanted people to be able to come and speak their opinion. And give their thoughts to this meeting, but nobody had any time to even prepare. We got our letters on Saturday. Sunday, there's nothing open. Monday, there's a holiday.
Yep.
Um, so we got two days, wh- right, one and a half. For those that got the letter on.
I'm gonna make a note of that because I just have to clarify with, uh, with Mr. Kitchen about.
The letter, the letters went out Wednesday. Um, the letters went to the mail on Wednesday.
Yeah.
City Hall, um, but they didn't get there before eleven, so they went out on Thursday morning.
Sure, sure. No, I just, I think that, for me, that was just part of the whole.
I did speak to Ms. Lowry today. I gave her some information and I also sent her to propose subdivision map electronically today.
Yes, you did. I received that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Alright.
She would, so she'd be able to see the parking situation, you know, one way in, one way out. And, uh, for, hopefully explain further what's going on.
Uh, Penny?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I'll make, I, it's a, it's a valid point, the, um. That the notification seems, given the, the unfortunate circumstance with the holiday and everything. Didn't seem like it gave the neighbors much time, so, you know, I'll, I'll have a chat with, um, with, uh. The powers that be about that, so.
I was out on quarantine, sorry.
Yep. So, but, no, the point is well taken. Um, is that all you had to say, Penny?
That's about it, yes.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your comments, um, and, um. Uh, next up is who?
And that would be Tony Davis.
Uh, the, the honorable Tony Davis. Is that true?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me? So, yes, this is, uh, Alderman Tony Davis, and obviously you guys know this is my ward. And this afternoon, while I was at school, my wife contacted me and say, oh, I hear you guys have, I hear you have a meeting tonight. And I'm like, no, this is one of the days I'm actually off. So, just to find out that way. I'm not sure, you know, the procedure, if the alderman in the ward that this is gonna, something like this is gonna happen, it's supposed to be contacted. But I didn't, that, that is okay. I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure about the.
Yeah, that's not the protocol.
Okay.
But I don't believe that's.
Alright, so, uh, anyway, this is Tony Davis, eighty-four Embry Street, this next street over, and. The lot that's right behind it, it's owned by my wife and her three siblings. And at eighty-five Gates, or eighty-five Embry Street, so our back, the backyard. Jurns this, uh, this property line. And so, uh, some concerns, I mean, I'm not gonna put it in, I'm just speaking on my behalf, I'm not speaking as alderman right now. Just trying to get some questions here. Again, I did not know about this, so I've been, I just got, so I. Uh, from my understanding, it's two, two-family homes?
Yes.
How many bedrooms are these being proposed?
Uh, Dwight, I think it's two, right? Two bedrooms each?
Uh, it's two bedrooms each, correct.
Two bedrooms, and so, and then you're seeing the, the proposal is to have no space in between. And a middle concern there would be, what if a neighbor's in a no- a noisy neighbor? And so now you had this solid wall that's, they're sharing this wall, and that can make, make some problems right there that. If somebody, if the neighbors or whoever, the families are in there, don't get along, or, you know, or that one's noisy, one's not. That could be concerned right there with that one wall, 'cause it's, I'm assuming it's not soundproof, and. The other question I have here, just listening, you're gonna have off-street parking?
Yes, there's the proposal for four spaces behind each one of the units. And there's a single ingress driveway and a single, uh, um, you know, uh. It's in, uh, one way in and one way out.
So one way in and one a, so I know this house very, uh, uh, good, and, and the former owners were, and my relatives. And, and, and then can grow, just going up and down Gate Street, and so again, you're not gonna have any yard space then. Because behind that yard, if you're gonna be putting these parking spaces behind the house, the apartments, there's not gonna have any, you're not gonna have any yard. And so, you know, if again, so if this is a family, family-owned or family, if this is a family that's moving in here. They're not gonna have a place, the children are not gonna have a place to, uh, to, to go, to enjoy, to play. Because it's only Gate Street then, and again, that is not a safe place to be. And, and then the only other thing, I'm assuming, I thought I heard that this is zoned for this, this is the one. This is zoned right now, for what? What is, what type of zone is this?
It's zoned for, it's zoned for this use. The only thing the applicant is asking for is that the, um. That the, um, setback requirements between the houses, um, be, uh, eliminated so that they can.
Also, so this property is zoned then, that it can have two family homes on it?
Yep.
Alright.
It's zoned R2, yeah.
So really, that's where, only questions I had at this time. I mean, again, this is something my constituents will, you know, have to weigh in on and then. You know, speak to me about it, but, uh, I just want, I just wanted to really listen in to see what was really going on. And, and that I, I appreciate you guys answering my questions right at this time. And if I have any further questions, uh, you know, I'll be headed to the planning board. I mean, obviously, you got this, this zoning. This, this is the first step, and then if you guys approve it, it goes to the planning board and they have to prove it?
Yep.
Well, they have to approve the subdivision.
The planning board?
Correct.
Alright, okay, alrighty, so.
And my last question here. Approve the building and the building permit, so.
Okay, my last question, in the letters that went out, did they go out to everybody on Gate Street? Or just the neighbors in to each side?
They only go to the neighbors that are contiguous to the subject property, so it wouldn't went to the neighbors on either side and the neighbors across the street. Because we don't see a street as a barrier, so it goes right across the street.
Alright, so wouldn't go to the behind the neigh- the neighbor on, on Embry Street?
No, no.
Okay.
No, I could be, that I'd be sending out forty, fifty letters at a meeting and that, no, it's just, the law requires the, uh, the, the adjacent properties.
Okay, alrighty, and, and so at this time, that's the only questions I have, uh. And, and, and then, like I said, if I have any other questions, I'll be reaching out. Thank you.
Okay. Um, who's up next?
Uh, I think John Blue wants to speak. John, do you wanna speak?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. John, can you state your name for the record and your address?
Uh, John Blue, B L U E, just like the color, eighty Gate Street.
Get John as a neighbor.
My concern is the density that will be created in that location. More importantly, aesthetically, if you drive from one end to the other on Gate Street. They're all single-family homes. With the exception of a couple of rentals. And aesthetically, if you put the two lots together with the wall and create the parking lot in the back. It's going to look like an apartment complex. There will be the elimination of greenery. And it will be just like an apartment complex, one way in and one way out. There will be no place for children to play, except in the street. And, um, I just think aesthetically, uh, it just changes, changes the, um. The appearance of the street and it, it creates a parking lot in my backyard and other people's backyard. I mean, leaving the two lots separately, at least gives a much better aesthetic. Appearance. And I don't see how someone can say that it's going to add more greenery. When essence, the whole backyard will be blacktop for parking spaces.
I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody made that argument, but I.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard someone say that it would create more greenery.
No, actually, we were talking about it being a lack of green.
Okay, my mistake.
No problem.
So that, that's, that's my, my concern, and I, I agree that the building next door is an eyesore. And I'm happy that, um, someone's coming in to, uh, do something about it, but. I think that they need to reconsider, um, their approach.
Alright, thank you, John, and this is John from the, from the haberdasher uptown, right?
That's correct. How you doing, Brian?
Hey, Blue, how are you? Alright. Is that all you, uh, is that, did you cover what you wanted to cover, John?
Uh, I did, but I really would like to look at the, um, the total plan. All I did was get a, 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 a basic. Uh, survey from Lowry O's.
I sent you a such a site plan, John.
Yeah, I'd like to see the whole project.
We don't have that yet, because the first step is getting through. The barriers before we get architectural plans. If, if, if the gentleman's not gonna get the variants. We wouldn't want him to go through all the expense of having architectural plans.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Appreciate your comments. Um, who's up next?
Um, I'm gonna ask Marjorie Wright if she wants to speak. Marjorie, do you wanna speak? You can unmute yourself.
Oh, can you hear me?
Hi, Marjorie.
Hey, Marjorie, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm Marjorie Wright at ninety-six Gate Street. I'm living next door.
Okay.
To the property that we're talking about. Um, my concerns have been pretty much addressed, but. Um, I will say this, I, I was concerned about the, uh. Facility going up, looking like, uh, an apartment complex. Um, I don't know how this building will improve, um, the community at all. I mean, um, even as we're talking, um, you're talking about, somebody called it. Uh, saying it would look like, uh, two townhouses. Um, but even so, it will change the appearance of the street, you know? Um, and it's been said before that our street is made up mostly of, um. One-family homes, two families, some of them have two families. Um, but these people mostly own their property, you know, and when. Somebody owns something, they're gonna take care of it. When you have a rental, people come and go, you know? Um, not really interested in taking care of the property, they're just interested in living there at the property. Um, so, you know, you have this great turnover. And, um, again, I, I don't see how, um, all of this will. Help the appearance of our neighborhood anyway, you know? Um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Um, can I just ask a question, uh, uh, of Dwight, Dwight? Um, is, you're, you're not intending to live in this building, right? Any of these apartments, right?
No, but we, well, there's a couple of, no, we're not.
Yeah, it's okay, I just, it was just, I just didn't know whether it was owner occupied or not, but it-
Not, it, it's not owner occupied, it wouldn't be owner occupied, um, but some of the issues, um, I, I hear what, uh, the concerns-
But, but bef- yeah, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna get into that right now until we're done, I just wanted to ask a question and get clarification. Um, and, you know, but we'll cir- circle back, is there anybody else that wants to speak on the, on the, on the application?
Yeah, so, there's two phone calls, callers here that are on the phone. Do either one of you people that are on the phone wanna speak?
You have to do star six to unmute.
If you're calling, you have to do star six to unmute your phone if you wanna speak.
Marjorie wants to ask a question.
Well, I'm sorry?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to ask another question if I could.
Alright, one second, Marjorie, because we still have some more people here.
Okay.
Had a chance yet. I'm gonna go to George, George, do you wanna speak? George, do you wanna speak? No, okay. Helen Atkinson, do you wanna speak? Hello, Helen Atkinson, would you like to speak?
No, thank you, I'm just, I'm just listening in, thank you so much.
Okay, one second, Marjorie. Okay, Marjorie.
I was just wondering, um, if these apartments will be low-income housing?
Um-
It's not really.
Yeah, it's, 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 um, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I'm, I'm, I've got to assume that they're market-rate apartments, because, you know, they're, they're two, two-family, um, buildings, but, uh, Dwight, you're not planning on doing-
We sit here today, we wasn't planning on, there's, you know, there's rules and regulations, you know, when it, when it gets involved with that, so, as I sit here today, I would say no.
Okay, yeah, makes sense, it's not-
Not gonna be low-income housing, okay. Um, I thought somebody said at the beginning that we were trying to, um, help those people who need housing.
Um, yeah, uh, the, but, there's a housing shortage in general in the city of Kingston, and we need all kinds of housing, this particular type of housing isn't where you would address low-income housing. Because low-income housing, you know, is, is a very specific type of housing that is often funded through tax credits, and it usually involves much larger structures with multiple rental units.
I see, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, there is a caller on the line with the last three numbers of his phone number, zero, seven, three, that has unmuted, would you like to speak, caller?
Hi, this is Virginia Davis.
Hi, Virginia.
I live, hi, how are you?
Good.
Um, my, my question is, um, how tall is this, um, building going to be, is it going to be the same height as it is now, or are we looking at a much taller type of structure?
I guess it's a question for Dwight, a, um, Dwight is, it's a, it's a typical two-story structure?
It's gonna be a typical, it's, it's, I wish, uh, yeah, it's gonna be a typical two-story, it's not gonna be something that's gonna be, that's gonna be, uh, the roof line is gonna be that much, you know, significantly higher than, uh, than the other buildings around it.
Okay, does that answer your question, Virginia?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Anybody else wanna speak?
Uh, my wife would like to, uh, make a few statements.
Sure.
Maureen?
Uh, my name is Maureen Bird Blue. And I live at eighty Gate Street, and I've been living here, um, pretty much my entire life, okay? And, um, I appreciate my privacy. I appreciate being able to come home from work and hang out in my backyard and enjoy my peaceful living. And I just feel that, you know, uh, for, a four-bedroom dwelling, or two, two dwellings that house two apartments, that are two-bedroom apartments, that we're, we're talking about sixteen, the possibility of sixteen more people plus being, uh, you know, next door to me, um, with a parking lot, it, it, it really infringes upon my peaceful living, my privacy. I, I am so totally opposed to this type of dwelling being, um, in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Hi, how you doing, Dwight?
I'm doing great.
Look, I can, you know, I, I can- There, there are some, uh, there is, there's a number of valid points being brought up, but I, I wanna let you, um, I wanna let you speak. And just to bear in mind as you're speaking, just direct your comments to, um, the board, and not to any-
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Um, so, well, first of all, in terms of, I tried to write down some of the concerns. Uh, one of the concern was the noise, I think the Alderman may have mentioned, oh, sorry, okay. So I, someone, uh, mentioned about the noise.
There's a concern about, about the soundproofing of the-
Soundproofing, I mean, but there, that, so, some of that can be taken care of by, there are soundproofing, uh, sheetrocking and things like that. Um, I don't know if that it would, you know, address anyone's, um, but there's soundproofing that can be done on the common wall, okay? Um, that's one of the, uh, items I wrote down, the other was, uh, there's concern about proximity to the house, um, how this building is being formulated. But I think that putting it in the middle actually is putting some, uh, distance away from-
Side yards, the side-
Exact- exactly, right, so there's more of a buffer, the way I'm proposing it, okay? Um, the next thing is, right now, we can put up two, two units, so, really, in terms of the amount of bedrooms and things like that, uh, peo- you know, I know there's concern about how many people is coming and going or adding to the block. Um, I think, even if we did it one building or two buildings, really, that doesn't change much.
I think, um, if I could just summarize the gen- some of the trends of the comments, the, and, and it's a genuine, i- it, it, I didn't think of it myself, which I'm a little surprised, I didn't, uh, but, but, you know, this is why we take public comment, because people have good input. And one of, the one thing that I heard that was a common theme throughout is the massing of the building, by putting the buildings together, you're no longer giving the appearance of two distinct buildings that are two families. Um, and it does change the character of what else is on the street, that is undeniable. Um, it does look more like an apartment building than it does two, uh, two-family homes with separation between them. Two, two-family homes with separation between them, visually, the massing of it, the visual impact of it, it wouldn't really look all that different than the rest of the homes on the street, because there's almost all the homes are two-story homes. Um, so, in that regard, the, the, the visual impact of the building, it's a, you know, it makes, you know, I get the comments that are, that are being made about that, but, you know, continue, if you have anything else to say.
Yeah, the only thing I can say is that there's also, I believe, um, well, it is, even though it's a two-unit building further down on within-
At the end of the street.
Yeah, it's on the, well, yeah, uh, not closer to where the, I guess, what train is on the-
Not Foxhole side, the other side.
Right, on the, on the opposite side, there is a building that they have, there isn't much greenery, and there is, you know, it's, it's, it would be not similar to what we doing, because obviously, we doing, uh, two, two units together. But the issues still exist, I don't, you know?
Oh, no, there's, there, there, yeah, I mean, I'm sure you can point to examples, the goal, um, and it isn't necessarily the goal of the ZBA, our job is more focused on a specific issue, and that is, is whether or not it makes sense to grant the use, the, excuse me, the area variance, and will that area variance, um, have certain impacts? And it's undeniable that the, that one thing that it will do is it will change, uh, the character, um, from a visual impact, um, having the two buildings with a common wall, um, there's nothing like that on the street, and, um, and although it's not our goal to get involved in other aspects of land use regulations, you know, it doesn't hurt to think about trying to improve, uh, you know, trying to improve situations like, you know, um, encouraging green space and what have you, but that's not our purview. Uh, our purview is to decide whether the use variance, um, doesn't dramatically change the character of the neighborhood. And I think the neighbors have brought up some, you know, some valid points in that, given the way the building is being proposed, it does really, um, create a building that looks more like a four, four-unit apartment building than it does two, two-family, uh, apartments, um, a two, two-family with two-bedroom apartments. Um, so, uh, I wanted to find out after the comments, is there anything else, Dwight?
No, no, that's not.
Okay, I wanted to find out if the board members, based on the public input, have anything else to say on the, on the, uh, application point? Donna?
Hello? Yeah, I, you know, I'm contemplating, I, I hear all the, uh, comments, and I'm, I'm actually staring at the map right now of the building. And, um, thinking that, you know, it's just too bad that they couldn't put some kind of space in between those two buildings to keep them separate, so, um-
Yeah, I mean, it was been, it's been my garden, yeah, I know there's a person that wants to, they came late, so, when we get done doing what we're gonna do, we'll go back to them, so, sorry. Kinda don't wanna disrupt the flow of things, but yeah, Donna, my, my, it's my, it's been my problem with this all along. And that's why I asked the question in the beginning, was like, is there a reason for why the buildings are put together?
Yeah, I'm looking at a twelve-foot driveway here, on one side, twelve-foot, twelve-foot ingress, twelve-foot egress, and all the cars in the back, which is fine, we got this little strip next to the buildings, you know, if they, you know, maybe opens it up a little bit more, you might have a little, a space alley, you know, that may, um, may be better.
Yeah, that, I, I think that I, I agree that the, um, the, the one thing that seems to ring true with the public comment is, is the massing of the building, it was a problem, it was a problem for me the minute I saw the site plan. Um, it's, 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 it's not ideal, and it does, um, it does lend itself to really changing the character of that neighborhood with all the- I mean, there are some, as some people have pointed out, there are some two families on that street that they probably don't, people don't realize they're two families, because
Yeah.
They're probably, um, you know-
Yeah, I actually just checked, a, a, a third of that entire street is multifamily buildings.
Yeah, so it's not also multifamily, as, as it was characterized, which I'm not, I'm not surprised, but it doesn't, there are no buildings that look like two, two families stuck together, which looks like kind of an apartment building. Uh, there's nothing that looks like that on that street. Um, so, that's, that I think is a, a genuine issue, I, I mean, the idea that, the idea that there are folks, and I understand, you know, having more people and more neighbors and everything, uh, but, you know, the, the area is zoned for what the applicant wants to do. Um, they're asking for an area variance, and we have to determine whether the area variance is the right thing to do in terms of some of the guidelines that we're looking at. You know, right now, my, the biggest issue is, is the massing of the building, and the effect that that has on the character of the neighborhood. Um, that, that's the biggie for me right now. Um, anybody else? Mary?
Um, I tend to agree, you know, the way the building's gonna be set up, um, the pavement in the back, the parking lot situation in the back, I mean, it's gonna affect the neighbors on either side and behind them, and it's gonna take away from the neighborhood, I keep seeing, there, there is one on Foxhole Avenue, and when I, when I look at the plans, and I hear all the conversations, I keep going to what that on Foxhole Avenue looks like, being placed in the middle of Gate Street. Um, and it's not gonna fit in with the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Um, as far as the parking, now, I was there today, I was there today, and I, um, looked at the property, and, um, the neighbor across the street came out. Um, I don't remember her, I don't know her name, um, and, uh, but she had, her, her concern, interestingly enough, was that Gage, and other people spoke to this, Gage is a bypass street, a lot of people use it-
Yes.
To cut around and get around the, the train, and race up and go up to the bypass and stuff. Um, so, so you got a lot of, uh, people really going fast on that street. So, um, the other thing is, is that you have a lot of people parking on the street, there's not a lot of parking on the street, because a lot of people utilize the parking, uh, the, this, the on-street parking. So, her concern, she lives directly across the street from the property, was that the, that the parking was gonna be on the street, and, you know, I explained to her that the, that the site plan called for the parking to be behind the buildings. So, the fact that, the fact that there's gonna be off-street parking behind the buildings, although not ideal from, from a standpoint of how much real estate it takes up and leaves no green space, at least, it keeps, you know, it, it conforms to the zoning, and it keeps more, more, uh, cars off of the, off of Gage Street. So, she, she seemed to be, she seemed to be happy about that, anyhow, I brought, I'm just bringing that up, that-
Yeah, but that doesn't, I'm sorry, that doesn't stop somebody who's living in those units from parking on the street, rather than going-
No, it doesn't, but as long as they have the required parking as per the code-
Yes.
Um, we can't ask for much more than that.
Sure.
You know, the code does allow for this lot to be subdivided into two fifty-by-one-hundred lots, and, and it allows for two-family on it. The question is, is do we allow the, the two buildings to be mended, mended in the middle? And, um, so, I mean, that's, that's where we're, that's where we're at. Um, I mean, we have a couple of options here, I mean, and we could ask, um, the, uh, the, we could ask whether or not the applicant wants to stay with this request for, uh, area variance, and roll the dice, uh, on that, or whether or not he wants to withdraw his application and come back with something that maybe allows for space between the buildings, but maybe not the full required space, he would still need a variance, but there would still, there would be separation between the buildings, because that seems to be one of the big issues, um, with regard to this building. Is it, does that, does the- issues, um, with regard to this building. Is it, does that, does the board agree with that assessment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my two issues with it are both the size of the building and its application to community character, and also just the, the, the part, the amount of pavement and also that application to community character, especially as viewed, viewed from the adjacent properties.
Um, uh, Dwight, I have a question for you. The, the proposed, the proposed driveway, the parking area in the back, is that, we're not talking about paved surfaces, are we? Or is that gonna be gravel?
It says blacktop.
It says blacktop, I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So it is all blacktop, all impermeable surface? Is Dwight still there?
Uh, uh, yeah, I'm here. Um, I'll be honest with you, I wish Paul, my architect, was here. I believe, uh, I, I believe, I'm not sure if it was Mary or Donna that answered that question, it's, uh, it's blacktop. But again, um, I would have to defer to the architect and see what the requirements are. If we don't need, if we can put gravel, we put gravel.
Well, here's the thing, uh, Dwight, uh, you know, and again, this isn't our job, but because of, be, because of, you know, with these lots being separated, the subdivision and everything, and, you know, if you were to put separation between the buildings, you, you've got, um, you know, when you put blacktop down, especially if you're gonna blacktop everything, including the four parking spaces, you're essentially creating a tremendous amount of impermeable surface where water is gonna shed. Um, and you're right on top of the property boundary, so, you know, it's, it's just something worth talking to your people about in terms of just having, uh, you know, having a surface that's more permeable that.
For water to drain, yeah.
Water to percolate and drain as opposed to, because that's a lot of blacktop on a very small piece of property. That's all, that's all, I, I, that's just a, just.
I could also see that this, that parking arrangement could be designed differently to require a lot less pavement.
I agree.
Better for you and would be better for the neighbors.
Right, right, right. I can go back to the drawing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but separating the lot and separating the buildings would give you the opportunity later on that if you wanted to sell off one lot.
One lot.
Problem.
Right.
Well, you could do it, I, you can do it either way, but I think that we're, the, the, this consensus is, are leaning towards having, uh, a real issue with the massing of the building, with the two buildings being joined. You could still sell the buildings independently of one another, that's legit. But, um, that's where the, that's where the issue is. Eric?
Yes, I don't know if it's my place to butt in here, but this morning I did receive three phone calls. They were each from the neighbors on each side, property. Um, their main concern at the time of their call this morning was that the house being proposed and built was gonna be too close to their yard.
Right, so by separating them, we're making.
So I wanted to say, by separating, yes, these houses will now be closer.
Oh, sir.
The neighborhood properties, and that was their biggest concern in the first place. That's why I sent them the map.
But you know, Eric, it's interesting, that, it's interesting, you know, because, because, you know, I think if we were to actually do a survey of, of that street and look at the, the size of the lots, there's probably some substandard lots based on current zoning, there's probably some a little bigger. But it probably, there's a lot of lots that are very similar in size to the proposed subdivided lots. And the proximity, uh, the proximity between neighbors is not gonna be all that different if we, if we separate the buildings. Um, you know, and although, although, although the neighbors are concerned about the proximity to their property line, I wonder if they're more concerned about what the building's going to look like and how it's gonna change the character of the street versus whether or not the house is, you know, five feet closer to the property boundary or, you know, whatever the number's gonna be, but, uh, or could be. I, I mean, I think that's what people have to think about. It, I, I, I think I wanna leave it up to the applicant, um, to decide whether or not, not he wants to just sort of withdraw and then come back. There's no, there's no reason why he can't do that, um, rather than to just, um, ask us to proceed with a vote as proposed.
Probably, probably to, uh, withdraw and come back, um, just because I believe uh, putting the building, uh, somewhat in the middle of the lot is the better use for it, rather than, I know there were a lot of concerns that, again, the building, you know, would be too close to their property, uh, noise and that, things of that nature. But I believe, that's, I believe. So maybe, you know, I see what we can do in terms of, you know, like you said, you know, water drainage, drainage and things like that, and come back, see if we can come back with something.
Yeah, just realize that there, there seems to be some genuine concern. And there's also concern about proximity, but I, I, I wonder which one takes the precedent.
Precedent, correct.
For us, in terms of character of neighborhood, the, uh, which is one of the things that we have to, um, consider. The building being in the center of the lot and joined together into what essentially looks and feels like a four-unit apartment building, um, is really, I think, um, an issue, um, just between you and me and, and, and everybody else who's, who's on this, is in this meeting, but that, um, anyhow, you, um, you're welcome to do.
Yeah, we'll withdraw for this, uh, you know, for this meeting and, uh.
Yeah, if you want to reapply, you can do that. Is that, that's okay, Eric, right? He can withdraw and then reapply, right?
Yes, so he can basically withdraw his application. Of course, the board will keep all the information that you already have. Um, and Dwight would submit to me any changes or a different proposal, um, at the next meeting, which, uh, headline for the next, for submission for the next meeting is going to be the twenty-eighth of January, next Friday. To be on, to be on the February tenth meeting. The next meeting we have will be the second Thursday of the month, which is February tenth.
Okay.
It gives you back nine days.
So for now, you'll withdraw and you'll come back, um, again, and, um, and we'll, uh, we'll have another, we'll have another swing at this. I, I wanna, tha- thank you Dwight for, um, for, you know, uh, engaging in the process and listening to everybody. And I want to thank everybody, um, from the public and the neighbors for all coming, uh, to the meeting and expressing their concerns and their views. And, um, and I want to thank the board members for their time as well. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Mary?
Go ahead, Tony. No, Tony, I think has something, just has a question or something.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, um, a recommendation to the applicant, if they do reapply, um, it might be, uh, if you want to stick with the adjoining design that you're originally looking at, uh, having an artist sketch of the proposed building or buildings together might, uh, really help.
Just like a rendering, like a rendering with.
Yeah, or even a, even an architect's sketch, I mean, you know, my architect just does it by hand and it looks fantastic. So, um, but to give you, give, give an idea of what the size of the structure really would look like.
Got you. Okay. Will do.
Yeah, a picture's worth a thousand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we all stay on this meeting after I?
Yes.
Exit everybody from the meeting, I would like to introduce you to our new Assistant Corporation Counsel.
Okay, if you can tell me everything I did wrong.
He's taking, he's taking over for Dan Gardenstein. And I would like to just, uh, exit everybody out of the meeting and just keep the board members on, if that's possible.
We got a motion to adjourn, though.
Okay.
From Donna, I don't know who the second was from.
Tony, you were seconding?
I'll, I'll second, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I dropped the ball on that one.
All right.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
So all the, I thank you Dwight. Um, all the board members stay tight, everybody else have a good evening.
Bear with me a second. Wait, wait a second, let me, uh, stop the recording.